All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August 8th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll call this meeting to order at 9:31 a.m. Rosalie, will you please do attendance by roll call?
Commissioner Arnett. Commissioner Curly. Commissioner Dan Zeison. Commissioner Landau.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Commissioner Slasher.
Here.
Vice Chair Limblum. Chairman Hernandez.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you, Rosalie. Moving on for chairman announcements. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with the open meeting law, ARS 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office, and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at www.mericopa.gov/planning. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance, or raise your hand within go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. The chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. The chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. All right, let's see. The meeting minutes from the July 11th, 2024 hearing were distributed. Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. We'll consider those minutes approved. And I think we'll roll right into the agenda. Darren?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the first item on the agenda is Z 2023-136, known as Camping World District 3. This is a C3 CUPD rezoning. The applicant is having this case continued indefinitely. That means there will be a new public notice before it comes to hearing. No actions necessary of the board of the commission today.
Great, thank you.
On the consent agenda, we have a single item, MCP 2023-005, known as the Parking Trailer and RV Storage District 4. This was continued from last month. The request is a military compatibility permit with a planned development for outdoor commercial storage of semi trucks and trailers and RVs in the AD2 MAA MF zoning district. It's located on five acres, half mile northwest of the northwest corner of Northern Avenue and Litchfield Road in the West Glendale area. There is no known opposition. The recommendation is for approval subject to conditions A through J as outlined in paragraph 13. I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Darren. Is there any questions of staff by the commission? Is there anybody here in the public? David, is there anybody on the webinar that would like to comment on the consent agenda?
There's no one online who's expressed an interest.
All right, so with no public interest and no questions from the commission, we'll close the public forum. Is there anybody from the commission that would like to discuss this consent agenda? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
All right, looks like we have a motion from Chairman Montoya to recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented by staff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
That, Lawrence. We got a second by Commissioner Lawrence. Is there any comments on the motion? All right, Rosalie, we'll go for roll call.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of six to zero.
Great, thank you, Rosalie. Moving on to the regular agenda, I guess we got agenda item number three. Andrew?
Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission. Z 2023-018 is a request for zone change from Rural 43 and C3 and IND 2, IND 2 IUPD for an indoor salt distribution facility and future rail spur on a 5.1 acre parcel located on the north side of Buckeye Road between Avondale Boulevard and 107th Avenue in the Avondale area. The applicant intends to utilize the existing buildings and infrastructure on the site to transfer or package salt from trucks to rail cars utilizing a rail spur that will be built on the site. The adjacent railway has been in use since approximately 1920, and the building on the site is first viewable in county imagery starting in 1953. The proposed IUPD development overlay amends the zoning standards to allow future buildings up to 50 feet in height and allows for the use of chain link fencing with view slats along the southern partial boundary, which abuts the railroad and Buckeye Road. The remainder of the parcel will be screened with traditional six-foot CMU walls. The applicant has additionally provided a list of prohibited uses to limit potential conflicting uses with the nearby residential. The city of Avondale objects to the proposal, indicating the industrial use does not conform with the city's adopted specific area plan. Their vision for the area includes adaptive reuse of the silos for commercial retail uses or some other community-centered space. Due to the proximity of the new housing community to the north, the city of Avondale requested the applicant hold an in-person community meeting to meet with the nearby residences regarding the proposal. The applicant completed the requested meeting and has also completed all requests and notification and signage requirements throughout this process. To date, staff has received no public comment or interaction regarding this application. Staff recommends the board adopt a motion of approval for the zone change request, Z 2023-018, subject to conditions A through J. And I would like to emphasize condition E, which requires all accumulation, piling, and/or stockpiling to occur within the building or silos and is not allowed outdoors. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Is there any questions of the staff for the commission? Is the applicant here today? Good morning. Thank you for coming down. If you'd please say your name for the record.
Morning. My name is Jessica Sarkisian, Upfront Planning and Entitlements, representing Salt Works.
Great, thank you. Do you have a presentation or anything, or are you just here to answer some questions?
I do. I can answer any questions, though. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns. I guess the biggest issue with this, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Everything's occurring indoors. The adjacent property to the west was recently also done industrial. We had support from community members as we've been cleaning up the site quite a bit. If you wanted to see the pictures. The only concern from Avondale, we found unjustified as the silos are going to need to be returned, taken down. They are falling apart and they're an issue. And then also, as far as their commercial use of the site because of its location and restrictions with the railroad, it would not be suitable for increased traffic. And so this is a better site, which will have limited traffic access.
Okay, great. The only thing that I had a comment on is in the report, it says that there's only a 900 square foot warehouse on the site, but it looks like it's significantly larger than that. I don't know if that was taken into consideration. I guess overall, I think the planned use is perfectly fine for this, but I just think we might want to get that cleared up because I think the warehouse is about 30,000 square feet, not 900.
Right. It's supposed to be finished floor is 900.
Yeah.
But yeah, that was an error, but it's just using the existing building on the site.
Okay, great. Unless we have any other opposition, then we can call you back up for rebuttal on anything. But is there anybody else from the commission who has any questions for the applicant? David, do we have anybody on the webinar that is interested in this case?
There is no one online.
Okay, with that, we will close the public forum. I guess I'll give my two cents real quick to the commission on this. We did see a case for the adjoining property a couple of months ago. I've grown up in this area. I grew up about two miles from this place. I think it's a good fit. It'll be great to see this not be an empty parcel and actually see something on there. So I'm all in favor of it. That's just my two cents for the rest of the commission. Does anybody else have any comments?
I have a question to staff.
Yes, Commissioner Montoya.
Yeah, there is a letter from the city of Avondale Development Services Department. And can you clarify if this property is not unincorporated nor has the city park and open space designation as indicated in the letter?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Montoya, this is Darren. This is the same concerns the city stated with the properties to the west, which was rezoned to industrial to IUPD. And the property to the east is Rule 43, but is railroad, industrial, and exempt from zoning authority. This is unincorporated county. This is a small county island that's a linear corridor along the railroad track. It has railroad siding and highway access. And staff, the staff's report indicates that the proposed uses are appropriate based upon that railroad siding use, the historic industrial and railroad-related uses along this corridor and other industrial zoning to the east and west. Avondale has expressed concerns, but it does not seem pragmatic or practical for this property to develop as recreational or as neighborhood-related commercial, given the site aspects and the adjacent zoning.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Commissioner Slasher. Commissioner Slasher.
I just want to say that I echo your comments and think it's an appropriate use. I grew up not too far from this site as well.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Slasher. Does anybody else have any comments? All right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve zoning case Z 2023-048, Salt Works.
All right, we have a motion to recommend approval by Commissioner Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll make the second. This is Commissioner Swart.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Swart. Is there any comments regarding the motion? Hearing none. Rosalie, we're ready for a roll call.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of six to zero.
Great, thank you, Rosalie. Moving on to agenda item number four, case Z 2024-056. Daniel, ready whenever you are.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission. Case Z 2024-056 is a special use permit request in the Rural 43 zoning district in Supervisor District 4 for a 75-foot-tall stealth-designed wireless communication facility designed as an elm tree. The site is located approximately 615 feet west of the northwest corner of 83rd Avenue and Planata Lane in the Peoria area. The proposal includes a 1,600-square-foot area with associated ground equipment enclosed by an eight-foot masonry screen wall. The proposal includes a requested increase in allowed tower and support structure diameter of 4'6" for an overall diameter of 14'8". The requested diameter increases are to facilitate the chosen stealth design, elm tree design style of the tower, and to allow future co-location. The applicant is also requesting a setback reduction to the western, northern, and eastern property lines. Development standards for towers require a two-foot setback from property lines for every one foot of height. Since the tower is 75 feet in height, a reduced setback of 106'6" from the western property line, 32'8" from the northern property line, and 44'8" from the eastern property line, as measured from the furthest vertical plane of the furthest protrusion of equipment arrays, is requested. The total opposition received as of yesterday is 85, and the total in support is two. Staff notes that three opposition documents were received from property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. The Federal Telecommunications Act prohibits local jurisdictions from considering public health concerns when reviewing wireless communication facilities. Such concerns are the charge of the Federal Communications Commission. Staff recommends the commission adopt a motion recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve Z 2024-056, subject to conditions A through H. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Daniel. Is there any questions for the staff from the commission? All right, is the applicant here today? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Commissioner Landau, no questions, but I do have to recuse myself from this matter.
Well, we still have a quorum.
Mr. Chairman, we will still have a quorum of six for business. She'll be noted as recused.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Landau. If the applicant's here, if you have a presentation. Thank you for coming down today. Will you please say your name for the record?
Yeah, my name's Chris Carroll. I'm with Pinnacle Consulting, the site acquisition manager. We represent, thank you. Well, I just want to thank everybody's time, you know, both people for and against it. We respect all voices and opinions. Basically, my presentation is just going to show the process of how we ended up at this location, how it's going to be designed in accordance to local, state, and federal guidelines to ensure safety in operations, and to also, I guess, let the constituents know that it's a common occurrence to have these near schools and actually on school grounds. And we have an RF consultant. He has multiple decades of experience, a licensed engineer. He will go into addressing those health hazards, just so, you know, everyone can know again that we, not specifically the health hazard, but at least RF radio waves and how basically, you know, it applies.
Well, we are not allowed to, we are, by federal law, we're prohibited from discussing public health concerns regarding a zoning case. So if anything, if there's any concerns with that, that has to be taken up with.
Okay, yeah. Well, he'll go through his slides and he'll just basically explain general radio waves and the justification of why we chose this and how it works specifically to that.
Yeah, I think we just need to focus on the zoning here and making sure, you know, whatever the SUP is for setback requirements and things like that.
All right, definitely. Okay, so I do appreciate it. And let me see. As you can see, this is a proposed wireless facility at 8406 West Planata Lane in Peoria. It is, the objective here is improve general service wireless. Again, he'll go more to that, but as well to help communications with emergency responders and people trafficking along particularly Pinnacle Peak Road. As explained, I am the project applicant, you know, native of here, have multiple years of experience in this industry. We're looking for a site for Sun State Towers, a locally owned and operated wireless facility company, as well as Horizon Wireless. The property owner has reviewed and agreed to all terms and location. And really, the proposal is for a 75-foot-tall stealth wireless facility. It's a 40 by 40 by eight-feet-tall CMU compound with a gate. It will be secured and locked. The CMU compound will be designed to screen all equipment, and the wireless facility will be designed to look like a fake elm tree with branches to conceal all equipment best possible. So just some generalities of wireless facilities and hopefully to address some of the concerns. They do not emit any light, odor, noise, or pollutants. They should have no major impact on the environment or surrounding circulation. Location that was chosen was after months to up to potentially years of reviewing candidates. We always try to, again, put in the least obtrusive area with the community in mind. And if you look at some of the arrows which I'll show here, you'll show that, you know, it does have the furthest distance from occupied buildings as available, again, in the area. So these do operate according to SEC and FAA guidelines. They are designed, engineered according to, again, the regulating building codes. This will be designed to allow up to three wireless carriers, and this facility will be maintained by the facility owner with the compound locked, secured, and screened. These unmanned wireless facilities do require minimal site visits and trips, and the construction is fast, about three to four months, with no noise or light impact to the direct surrounding environment. This is a design of what we're proposing. These are actual built examples of wireless facilities from this company and a compound. You can see they are pretty nice and minimal and essentially the best, again, available. We know that wireless facilities aren't, you know, the most sought out there or really, most people don't necessarily, you know, appreciate the design or whatever. We do the best we can to present the best option aesthetically. So as far as the location and the general target area, we are, the site location is close to Planata Lane, which is just southwest of Pinnacle Peak Road and 83rd Avenue. The zoning designation is Maricopa County. You can see that actually Great Hearts School to the east, as well as some neighbors to northeast are City of Peoria zoning. We did reach out to City of Peoria zoning specifically with this project. They said that since that property is not within their parcel or within their jurisdiction, they really cannot say or have really direct comments on it, but they did say that it was not against anything they had in their land use. And so they didn't really have any comment, just saying that it's not within their jurisdiction. That was part of the pre-op comment, so we reached out to them as well as Great Hearts Academy, just as part of the pre-op comments. As you can see in the area map, it's a highly designated residential area. A little bit closer, you can see some hash marks of properties that we looked along Pinnacle Peak Road. The engineer will explain how there's existing facilities to north and south. So Pinnacle Peak Road really was our designation where we could have some flexibility, a little bit east or west. But really, we were tied heading north or south due to other existing facilities for wireless functionality. So I started off, again, 91st Ave on commercial lots and headed east. And the proposed site is really, as far as we can really go to hit the target areas that we want. But I definitely reached out to a lot of the larger lots, a lot of the more either city or commercially owned lots there, but they were not available or interested. A little bit zooming closer, you can see some of these hash marks. Those are City of Peoria drainages, so they were not available due to their inability to provide us land. Moon Valley Nursery, they utilize all their lot. They actually don't own the land, so there was no interest there. To the east has Clear Valley Home HOA. They did not respond, but they were too far out of the range to work, but we did check that functionality-wise. So again, if you look just at the aerial and what is available, we literally just tried to put in the best place possible. The person who owns this subject site actually owns a property to the west. They've owned this lot between multiple generations. He plans to give it to his kid. They're all in agreement and, you know, want this facility for their future land use. And so again, if you look at just direct neighbor and proximity, this site really is the best option that was truly available. So these are some site context pictures. As you can see, there's light poles about 10 feet away from the edge of his property that will be about the height of it. So again, when we look at facilities and where we want to place them, we typically want to locate them where existing infrastructure is. There's APS poles that run along the southern edge to his property, all along Planata Lane up to 86, heading north. So those APS poles are there, as well as those fill lights that are on the corners of football field, which, again, when you look for places to put facilities using existing vertical structures is always good for that. This is a view looking east. You can see the site's going to be in front of that tree. So when we're presenting options, we look for trees, vegetation. This is, again, is the best stealth option available. You know, there might be some opinion base there, but with the technology that's available, we're using the best design, and they do a good job of maintaining it and trying to stealth as best as possible. So you can see that there's low voltage wires that go along the western side of his property. So that was part of the reason why we also had to move it a little bit on the eastern side of his property. He does have existing utilities and existing well. So this is a picture northwest of his site, looking towards. Again, you can see there's a parking lot, a football field, and a lot of tall vertical structures. So site context-wise, it made the best sense. This is another picture standing out. Again, you can see the fill lights that they're recently installed. Again, where we're going to place it doesn't emit any light. So we feel, again, placing it near existing structures, fill lights, APS pools, long-term land use, buildings like schools, always makes sense. So that was really the best and only option available when we're being all the sites. So looking at the site aerial, we're moving the access as close and most efficient to the east side. All access and all site plans and engineering will be according to code. We did have the City of Peoria, again, as part of the pre-op comments. We actually reached out to more jurisdictions that, as part of their requirement. So we reached out to City of Peoria and made sure that their fire department reviewed. We're going to do a hammerhead access, so it will have, you know, safety there. And again, we place it on the northeast. You can see there's a cement pad. The current landowner does have plans to build a garage and other things to hopefully put all his cars in storage and to make it more organized. But putting it on the northeast corner is away from the existing utilities and away from his future land use plans, and it kind of tucks it all together in the best place possible. Looking at the site plan, it basically just puts out the labels. Again, everything submitted goes through the proper channels through local and state building codes. But these are, you know, pretty standard layout and design. And the compound is essentially just going to be the 40 by 40 with space for one carrier, but up to two other carriers in the future. And then on the keynotes on the left, it just really explains, again, that we follow all guidelines on a local, state, and national level. Look at the site elevations. This just shows the monolim. This has up to three carriers. And again, that height and everything is chosen for ultimate, hopefully, functionality to get the most of this wireless facility. You'll see in the future slides that there is basically an island where there's no facilities along Pinnacle Peak for miles. And so this really would help support that. The site plan compound, again, it's really efficiently laid out. Basically, they're just going to put all the equipment tucked in on the back northwest corner. There will be an access gate. Everything is designed and proved through the utilities and, you know, is going through the proper channels. As far as photosim, it's kind of hard to see exactly where these are at, but this is pretty far back, so you can see it looking, there's three views on these photosims. This was actually before the fill lights were added. So in some of the other pictures, you all see those, but those would help with the verticality and some of the context appropriateness. And that is across the street, looking south from the parking lot. So again, you know, that's a parking lot that holds quite a bit of overflow traffic. It's pretty busy. So looking at the design, these ones are, you know, examples of recently built facilities. This will be the goal to design and to make them look as aesthetically pleasing as possible. And Steve here is going to explain the reasoning and some of the analysis behind why we needed this in this particular location.
All right, before Steve gets started, I got a question for staff. So this SUP, so are we here for the SUP because the setbacks don't meet the minimum requirements? Or is it an SUP to have a cell tower on RU 43?
The SUP is required to deviate the standards for diameter as well as setbacks.
So if this pole fit the requirements, we wouldn't be here today.
Correct.
So the SUP is only here to talk about whether or not we are going to deviate from the standards to put this pole on the site mainly because of diameter and setbacks, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And can I address that, too?
Yeah.
I do appreciate that. There is, you know, precedent of where this is more common. Basically, a lot of the setbacks in a lot of codes and jurisdictions are more based on just a rationalization for where to fall over. Gravity dictates that it would fall one to one, so the height, the height of the tower, you know, within property lines. But these are based off steel. They're actually designed to buckle in the midpoint. We do provide, in that case, when we do ask reduction, that we will provide a fall zone certification with a license. We do provide in that case, when we do ask reduction, that we will provide a fall zone certification with a license local engineered. And basically he will certify the fall zone radius and it will show on the plans and also be certified step and engineered to show that, um, within the radius, uh, within all property lines.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so with, uh, with all due respect, I think let's move on and have the commission talk. And we can get some public information and then if we have a need for rebuttal, then we can bring up your consultant, then you guys can come back up. Is that, is that sound there?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for your, uh, presentation. Um, is there any questions for the applicant from, uh, the commission? Okay, uh, hearing none, uh, we will proceed with in-person speakers, then allow those registered online to speak. After a public comment, we allow time for rebuttal by the applicant. And, uh, I just would like to reiterate, legal counsel has advised me before that federal law, you know, prohibits us from considering alleged public health concerns on a zoning case. And we are only here to discuss the, uh, SUP in regards to the diameter of the pole and the minimum setbacks. So, um, just please keep that in mind. Uh, if you come up here to speak, so we'll get started. Uh, Allison, sorry if I butcher your last name. There you go. Thank you. Sorry. Yes, if you're here, we'll, uh, please keep your comments under, uh, two minutes and, uh, please state your name and, uh, thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Allison. Um, sorry, I've had a lot of issues at home lately. Um, I have two children at Great Hearts Academy. And I am very much aware of the nineteen ninety-six FCC guidelines. However, I would like to state that these guidelines are outdated. In the early nineteen nineties, they took rats and exposed them to RFs so intense that the rats stopped eating. They then put it in half and said, this is the safety limit for humans. In two thousand thirteen, this was reopened to see if thermal-only guidelines were truly safe for humans. We know that biological response to RF is, is a case because that's how MRI images are created.
Uh, excuse me, Allison, like, uh, like I said before, we are not allowed to.
I'm not saying anything about health issues though. I'm just stating the facts the way he did. He stated his facts. I'm also seeing the facts. I find it very curious that the FCC went to court in twenty twenty with the CHD. Till today, even though they are under mandate, they are scared because I'm telling the truth. I'm not saying anything about my kids getting sick. I'm just stating the facts of what the court has mandated the FCC to do and the FCC has not complied. Therefore, is it worth the risk when you have over thirteen hundred people, staff, faculty, children?
Yes, but we can't, we can't take that into, we can't take that into consideration on a zoning case. So, uh, my legal counsel, um.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, your prohibition is not based on any FCC guidelines. It's based on the fact that the statute specifically prohibits you from hearing that. And therefore, none of this should be in the record because it would, if the case ever proceeded beyond the jurisdiction of the county, all of that would have to be stricken. So lady may be correct that the guidelines are outdated, but this is the wrong forum to raise those issues.
Yes.
Fine, one last.
Yes.
Then I understand and I will leave the podium. However, these are children developing seven hours or plus a day, five days a week, over a hundred and eighty days a year.
Yes, I.
Would just, I would like, regardless of the laws, you need to take that into consideration, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next up, we have Morgan Lorette. Good morning. Thank you for coming down. Will you please state your name for the record?
Morgan Lorette. All right, so, uh, I keep hearing that this is going to be in accordance with local zoning laws and regulations, but that is actually not the case. I learned today that they're actually asking for an exception. So with that, I just want to throw that out there. Can we talk about public safety or is that not against, is that against the rules? Okay, public safety. So I have two kids at Great Hearts, uh, amazing children. And anybody that has driven past this property or looked it up on Google Maps, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be shocked if they thought it was a junkyard. I mean, it's a dump. It's got over thirty cars on the property that do not run. Now, look, I worked on cars when I was a kid. My grandfather was under the hood. He was spraying some, uh, some, some starter fluid on it. That thing just went up in flames. Old rubber, old oil, that's how this works. Now, that wouldn't be a big deal. If all these cars lit on fire and the house lit on fire, I'd be there with marshmallows. Let's make some s'mores. Let's rock, right? But the problem is, is now you're adding a ton of electricity, three hundred and sixty kilowatt hours of electricity to have three carriers on that pole. So now you're adding ignition to combustion. What's going to happen when that thing actually goes up in flames? Now, look, we keep saying that it's a football field. You're right, it is a football field. That field is also Great Hearts Field. It's where my kids go in the morning. It's where they go to recess. It's where they do their fire drills. Twelve hundred people out there when they do their fire drills. So if something bad happens and there's a fire, where are they going to go? They're going to go right next to that tower. And now they're asking to go through, uh, to ignore the local zoning and regulations and actually reduce the offset. I mean, come on here, like this is, this is redonkulous. So I think there is a huge public safety concern. I have my timer, um, that actually needs to be taken into consideration before we allow that regulation to be, um, changed or whatever you guys got to do for this thing. That place is a dump.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next we have Kyle Navarette. Good morning. Thank you for coming down. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, Kyle Navarette, I'm the headmaster. I, I wanted to use my time to just maybe just get answers because, um, my gut tells me, you know, it, it'll probably be passed and I just, I'm worried I won't have clarity for people who have asked various questions. So I don't know how that uses my time limit. So I don't know.
Go for it.
Something to do. Okay, so the first thing is, um, can I just get a quick answer to just, will we get, how will we get updates or precise timing on construction when it's operational? And I say this only because we've had a number of families and a few teachers that said, I, I might not be able to continue. And I want to be able to give them that, um, you know, whatever they think, uh, the fear is, however reasonable you think it is or not, right? So I just want some clarity on that. The other is just, um, people have asked, because they own two properties, as Chris said, um, can we consider a different location? And then that makes this hearing irrelevant because you don't have to worry about setbacks because they have over two acres to consider where to put that tower. I think it would, uh, be preferred by parents who don't want it at all to consider moving it further on that property or even on the adjacent property to the west. I don't think that's an unreasonable request. I'd like to be able to share with them. Here's why it must be right here next to the school over and against all the other area you have. Um, there is significant concern, as the gentleman just said, about that area because parents have been there for twelve years. That place has not been cleaned up. A ball goes over there. We never see it again. There's a contentious relationship between, uh, the neighbors and the school. Uh, I don't have any problem with them. I've never even talked to them, but they absolutely don't like us. So there is worry that that being in so proximity, uh, right? Both with construction workers who probably aren't, uh, vetted and may even have a record. Uh, is there any way to move it further away from being right next to the school? Um, and then, uh, last, but did my time up?
No, keep going.
Is it public knowledge or can we find out, um, how much the cell company is paying? Because you have had, uh, parents that said, hey, if the motivation is money, we would consider paying them to not have it on there. And so I just want to know how I could find out that information.
Um, okay, so for the last one, I don't think that that's any of, uh, anything in our jurisdiction to talk about that. I think you guys would have to maybe speak with the applicant after the hearing is over. And just so you guys know too, once, all we do here is provide a recommendation to the board of supervisors.
Okay.
So then they are the ones who will actually make it official. So you, you know, that's, all we do is make a recommendation. We hear the cases, we make a recommendation to the board of supervisors, so.
But we just on a hearing though, at least on that timing sequence, like what's the.
Yeah, I, I'll ask the applicant, uh, because he'll have some time for rebuttal and then we'll answer your questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, did you want me to answer his questions or?
Uh, sure, yeah, on timing and, and I was going to ask the applicant on relocation, but.
Yeah, uh, and just in reverse order, uh, regarding the, the monetary transaction, we have no knowledge of that. Uh, you can just speak to the applicant or the property owner if they're willing to talk to you about that. Uh, in regard to the location, uh, the applicant may always submit a different location. Uh, in fact, if they were to locate this on the east side of what's called a concrete pad on, uh, their site plan, uh, this would be a by right use. There would be no public notice. They could go straight to construction permit. Uh, because it appears that would meet a hundred and fifty foot setback from, uh, from all, uh, lot lines. Um, I should also note that if staff considered the, um, the pine tree design to be completely stealth and there were other pine trees of similar size in the area, that this site that they're at now would be a permit by right. Uh, but because we don't consider this, um, uh, a natural design with similar trees, uh, uh, natural trees of similar size, um, warranting less of a setback, we require them to come through for a special use permit. So the only thing they're here for today is because their proposed site doesn't meet a two-to-one setback and has an antenna array greater than eight feet. Uh, otherwise, uh, because of that, they need a special use permit and that is per our regulation.
Yeah.
Uh, and then finally, the third question was regarding notice. There will be no public notice, uh, on construction permits. Just like there's no public notice for a construction permit of a, of a build, of a building permit for a house. Um, you do have the ability to do online searches into our database, uh, into our permit and case tracking system, uh, to see what the status of a permit is. Uh, there will be, um, uh, the permit posted on site, but that's for the benefit of our inspectors. It's not a public notice. So again, for administrative items like construction permitting, there's no public notice. Uh, and, uh, that's, I believe I answered the question, sir.
Great. Uh, thank you, Darren. Um, I believe we have one more person, uh, here, Suzanne DiStefano. Good morning. Thank you for coming down. Would you please state your name for the record?
Sure. Good morning. My name is Suzanne DiStefano.
All right, you have, uh, two minutes, please.
Can you hear this okay? Uh, I'm the headmaster of Archway Classical Academy Glendale, which is the sister school to Glendale Preparatory Academy. I specify this difference because we are two separate schools. We share a campus. We're right next to each other, but we have two charters, two addresses, two headmasters and administrations. We are separate schools. My school, Archway Glendale, never received any notification from the applicant regarding the proposed cell tower. Uh, only our sister school, Glendale Preparatory Academy, was notified of the potential tower. Uh, and they shared that information with us. Uh, my second comment, well, actually I have several, is the, the request to reduce the setback zone. Uh, I'm not sure if the pictures adequately show. It's been referred to as a football field. Uh, and Mr. Lorette shared this also. It is a football field, but it's also where our students, our K to five students have recess. Uh, right up to that fence. They call it unicorn grotto. They pretend to be unicorns and they like to play in there, tag. Football, they play there before school, morning recess, lunch recess and after recess. So I'd be very concerned of reducing a potential setback if anything were to fall, that it would fall on young children. Uh, I also would like to mention that there was the earlier stated approximately eighty letters of opposition. Most of those are from families at my school that have concerns about the, the cell tower being constructed. If those families were to disenroll, and many have shared that they would, if the cell tower were constructed, we would have a massive effect to our enrollment. And we are currently staffed for the current enrollment, so that would affect our teachers' livelihoods along with the education that these students receive.
Okay, um, I'll give you thirty, thirty more seconds to wrap it up if you have some more comments.
Yeah, I just, we have multiple families with grave concerns. And if they were to disenroll from the school, not only would their children's education be affected, but it would be devastating to the school to lose twenty-five to thirty percent of our students, especially mid-year when the school is funded by enrollment.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, is there anybody else, uh, here in person that would like to speak? All right, um. Sure.
What I'm hearing is if they chose a different location on their property that didn't require setbacks, we wouldn't even need to hear and they could do it like that.
Correct.
Okay, so I just think, uh, he's saying no, but I don't.
If, if they, if they went, if they moved, I thought Darren said that if they moved over.
I'm sorry, they, if, they would also have to have an eight-foot diameter.
Okay, gotcha.
Got it.
So if, so if it were, if they met the setbacks and the diameter was smaller, then yes, this would never even come in front of the commission and it would be uh, an administrative approval.
And I just think commissioners just consider, why are they picking that location? Just giving the contention. Um, and then also, am I able to ask, uh, Commissioner Luriette? I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, why she's recu- recusing, I'm just.
Landal?
Landal, sorry.
I'm not sure why she's recusing herself, so.
Oh, okay. Is she able to share or say no, she doesn't want to?
Yeah, since she recues herself, she doesn't listen. Or she's not supposed to comment on it, so.
If she says, oh, if she, if she can, that's fine. I was just curious when I heard it, I was.
Yeah, she's, she has recused herself, so she's not allowed to comment or speak about this case, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just for public record, so everybody's aware, there's one other thing, uh, I need to make clear. Uh, federal law allows for, uh, what's called, um, eligible facility request co-locations. Uh, it is, uh, under a federal law, they can come in and get an eighty-foot high, uh, cell tower. Well, per our zoning ordinance, by right, they could get an eighty-foot high cell tower, a hundred and sixty feet, uh, plus from all, uh, lot lines and have an eight-foot, uh, diameter antenna array. But under federal law, after they get that tower permitted, without, um, any discretion from the local, from our jurisdiction, they can add a twenty-five-foot height to that tower and a twenty-five-foot protrusion to that tower by straight to permit without any, uh, any zoning entitlement or, or public notice.
Okay.
So it is, um, there is a lot that can be done under federal law and there's no, uh, public notice aspect. That would be, uh, an existing, an original tower and then an extension to the tower. And that would be perfectly legal and by regulation.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that, Darren. If, if you need, if you want to speak, you have to fill out a speaker's card because we have to have the comment, we have to have it.
I just had one single question, just for the gentleman that spoke first. I just want to know, just hearing it, I'm a parent over at the school. Why did everywhere else get rejected? If anybody's been to that area, if you just drove eighty-third and Pinnacle Peak, there's a park right, you know.
Is, I don't think it's an issue of rejection as much as they couldn't strike a deal with the landowner to get the.
And it would be interesting to know why.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm sorry. Yeah. Uh, what was your name for the record? Okay, can you please fill out a card and give it to staff, please? Thank you very much. Um, uh, David, do we have anybody online with their hand raised or registered to speak?
Yeah, I have, I have three speakers. The first is, is Aaron. Uh, Aaron, you just muted yourself. Aaron Kelso. You have to unmute on your side. There you go.
Okay, well, I joined, I joined by phone, uh, so that's why.
Go ahead.
Quick, um, if you can hear me okay.
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you please say your name?
My concern, I'll stick to the facts. One, that property is a massive junk heap. You can see it from the engineer's pictures. You can see these cars. You can see the piles of trash. Literally, there is a dumpster full of trash in the front yard and it's not temporary. This is a huge risk and that school is very close to be getting an exception to the setback. I'm also going to speak to what the headmaster spoke to, which is notification was put up after the school year was out. As parents, we didn't know until two days before school started. And again, Archway was not notified. So if we had had proper notification, I guarantee you that we would have filled up your waiting area there and you would have a lot more opposition. So I find it very interesting that a property that already has an issue with the school made it very timely to put the notification out there once the school year was done. There are better places. So again, I'm speaking to the facts. There are better places. Please request that they look at alternate locations for this tower so that our children can be physically safe playing on that football field. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment real quickly, just for the public's benefit, uh, we do not have an, have an open zoning violation on this site. We do not proactively police zoning enforcement. We react to citizen complaints. You may submit a complaint of a zoning violation for junk trash and debris or. a complaint of a zoning violation for junk trash and debris or unregistered and opera vehicles online. Uh, I'll also leave um my card here for the headmaster after the hearing if he wants to uh email me directly, but you can submit zoning complaints online, www.mericopa.gov/plan.
Great, thank you, Darren. All right, uh, David, do we have uh, who's next?
Yeah, I have, I have Anna. Uh, Anna, you need, there you go.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Anna Draxiu. I am a Peoria resident. I am a Peoria business owner. I own a brokerage, a real estate brokerage um in Peoria, Arizona. And I have two children that attend Glendale Preparatory as well as uh additional family members that attend that school as well. My greatest concern is the decrease of property values from a real estate perspective. Um, but I would like to uh come to the county and recommend consideration to move and look at other parcels um and not issue a special use permit for this project. There are additional parcels for consideration. One is a parcel number, parcel number two zero one, two zero nine six eight. That is Arizona state land. The other parcel is two zero one, zero eight, three nine three and that's city of Peoria. Both of those parcels are away from residential and commercial use. Um, I'm, I think that that might be something to explore. They're north of Happy Valley and eighty-third avenue. The other concern that I have is that both of my children are athletes as well as my niece is an athlete at uh Glendale Preparatory. They are out on that field uh regularly as well as many children from the school. And uh, the, the fall radius uh is an additional concern that was brought up at uh today's meeting. And with uh the unpredictability of monsoons and storms in Arizona, I think that it's important to have the children's health at um, at heart by the county. Because uh the potential of any cell tower falling on the children, um, that is definitely a new concern of mine today that was brought up. So I think that uh the county should look at relocating this uh particular project north of Happy Valley at the two parcels that I uh stated earlier. And uh, that's, those are my concerns.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, David, do we have another one online?
Yeah, I have two more. Uh, Jose Hernandez is next. Uh, they're still self-muted. There you go.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we, we can hear you. Can you please state your name uh for the record?
Yeah, this is, my name is Jose Hernandez. Um, I got one children in the Archway School. Um, I, I worked with telecommunications before and actually sat service and trying to place uh towers and everything like that. I definitely have concerns, you know, with that being so close to the school. Um, especially the fault zone. I know that we have this meeting regarding the sections that they're asking. I mean, there's other things like grounding, you know, uh, safety for lightning. Um, and I know, I think someone said about uh extensions that happen after, right? When you place the tower, right now they're saying is one carrier. But I know that after that is up, you can add more antennas, you can change the direction, you can change even antenna models if you want to to increase the power, you can, and so I don't know what the specific target is uh for, for this tower in terms of uh traffic or coverage, but it will definitely be better as many um other parents and and people uh spoke about, if they could just adjust their RF design to move these to a location that is north and farther from the school to avoid and, and prevent for any safety risks that, that the tower proposes and, and, and put is in there. Uh, I definitely, I, I've done a lot of even testing for grounding and I know that when these things go up, you have to have all the regular maintenance and everything that happens and there is no, once the site is being approved, I don't think that there is any direct way to monitor everything that happens after that for, in terms of maintenance, structural maintenance, electrical and everything like that. So I will, I'll just really appreciate if they can say what is the main target in terms of the coverage that they want to do and if they can move that away and just put it in a different lot, not right next to the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, David, we got one more?
I do. Uh, Lisa Engstrom. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Will you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Lisa Engstrom.
All right, thank you. You got two minutes?
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna get through, try to get through this as best as possible. I would um absolutely be there in person today. But I cannot be there. Um, I am grieving the loss of my husband. Yesterday, he passed away from brain cancer. I have emailed the gentleman. I'm sorry, I cannot remember their names right off. Um, my concerns. Daniel is one of them. And I would just like to state my concerns because I cannot be there today. Like I said, my husband who passed away yesterday, he was in real estate and um I did share, talk to him about this before he passed. One of his big concerns, of course, was we have children, grandchildren and nieces and nephews at both Archway and Glendale Prep. Seven, to be exact. So this impacts our family hugely. As a real estate agent, he was concerned about also property values that they will be decreased and I will know, I will not share my address, but I live fairly close by. So not only property values, but also our health. Um, some of those are increased cancer risk. Another one, because we have so many young children there, they're still developing. There are reproductive system changes that could take place over time. Of course, we won't know that right away. But it will be in time, ten years maybe. Um, in May of twenty-eleven, the World Health Organization classified this type of radiation that cell towers emit as a class-two carcinogen. That is alarming and concerning for how many students, staff and faculty that are there at that amazing school. I really hope that you will take all of this into consideration because these children, they are our future. My gut feeling, honestly, this is being driven by the homeowner, possibly financially and also out of spite. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening and I hope you consider everything I've had to say.
Thank you very much and uh I'm very sorry for your loss tonight. My condolences to you and your family. Um, David, do we have anybody else online who wishes to speak?
Yeah, Chairman, I have, I have one more, Rachel Harding. Rachel needs to unmute her. There you go, Rachel, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much for um having this today and letting us speak. Um, I just want to notate.
Alex, can you please state your name for the record?
Rachel Harding, Rachel Harding. So I'm a concerned parent um who has children that attend the school and also live in the area. I'm kind of just echoing what other parents are saying and um just kind of trying to be a voice to be heard that I think that I don't think it's necessary that the cell tower go in this specific area. I think um I've heard incidents um of other people who have cell, cell towers on their property. These ones were uh the, the palm tree ones where, you know, monsoon winds took the palm fronds and, you know, um would have decapitated, you know, people on the property if they were standing in the vicinity. They, you know, kind of just sliced right into the building. And we all are residents in Arizona and we know the critical damage that these high winds do to properties. So to put something like that in a vicinity, not only while kids are on the property during school hours, outside of school hours, we have school events there. We also have a church that meets in um the school on the weekends. That entire congregation will also be um concerned about these types of things and I, you know, I want to echo that. I think the timing of this is really interesting that it's done over the summer where, you know, a lot of people are off on vacations or hard to get a hold of. Like, had this been something that came about this time of year, I think we would have a much bigger response and, you know, you even see concerned parents who have family loss and, and these great, you know, life things happening are still making the time and effort to come. Um, you know, like it's a, a Thursday at ten-thirty, like many people are tied up taking care of kids, getting them to, to and from school at work. So I just think this isn't, you know, like community friendly at all for us to give us our voice. I know you guys have things that you're taking care of, but um it's like we're in sick of back to school season. Um, so um, you know, also living in the area, I think this is just a bad decision. You know, like the realtors would know more than I do. I'm in the construction industry and I'm overthinking, I'm thinking over here. Logistically, have you considered like the safety of kids coming to and from? Even the residents themselves, you know, setting up to, you know, build something like this this time of year, whenever you know, there's just high traffic area, like, I mean, it just seems like a to- a total nightmare and that a different property would give ease of safety of everybody in the surrounding area. So those are my concerns, um, just as someone in the community and kids who attend the school and I just want to take the opportunity to, you know, speak on that.
Great, uh, thank you for your input. Uh, David, do we have anybody else online or anybody with their hand raised?
That, that are, those are all the speakers, Chairman.
All right, great. Um, if uh, is Mr. Curial, right? If you can please come back up. Um, I've, I got a list of questions based on everybody. Hopefully we can get, address them all. Um, I think the biggest, first and foremost, um, I did see that your client does own those two parcels. Is there any opportunity to put it on the other parcel?
No, um, essentially he is planning to expand it. You guys see the cement pad already in place. There are future expansion plans. He's actually gonna incorporate most of that facility. So a lot of the things that people are kind of complaining about, the cars and other junk. The goal is that this will help, according to what he said, clean it up. He's gonna basically build a garage and a shop over there. So he and his mom lives next door, just to the west in that house that they built. So that this current lot is more like a workshop, you know, house where his son's gonna live and then him and his mom are gonna move to the house to the west. The owner's an architect. He designed and built the house to the west and um, you know, they have however they plan on using it, but specific to their future land use as well as existing utilities on site.
Okay, and then uh one gentleman online spoke about grounding and lightning and I, I'm sure that's all taken into consideration in the design, but can you just touch on that to explain?
Yeah, um, essentially, these are designed um in accordance to, you know, all the, the building codes and regulations. Um, so to be honest, you know, I don't set those standards or uh, you know, exactly know why they set exact, you know, dimensions or whatever, but this is gonna adhere to those. Those are always taken in accordance. Um, these facilities are built to withstand a hundred and fifteen miles per hour winds. Uh, some of the things that worries and concerns brought up really are um, you have higher chances of other facilities, the, you know, other poles and light poles probably are built a lot less structurally sound than these. These have deep caissons with Matt Tower Foundation. Part of the, one of the only reasons we actually have to go through this process, you know, ideally, we would have setback in the middle. You know, I could attest to everyone. I always try to go by zoning rights so we don't have to go through these lengthy processes and extra, you know, notifications and just, you know, it's, it's easier for everyone if you can, but um, the landlord specifically had this side of mind, but as far as safety and all other concerns, those are gonna be engineered and certified and regulated and reviewed by the people that have the authorizations to review those, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, is there any other questions from the commission for the applicant?
And I just want to say, we do follow all notification guidelines, so uh, the landowners, you know, on file, everything, we have to go through an affidavit, we show the letters, we show the list. There's quite a bit of long process. Actually, these wireless facilities require more than typical buildings, you know, so um, they require a lot of uh oversight and, and, and views and eyes and we follow everything. And um essentially, we provided all proof of the signposting, the letters and our mailing list and, you know, everything that was required a- a- as a affidavit and notarized, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chris has been really great. I believe he absolutely has tried to do that. I think for the record, he should share with the commission that immediately upon meeting with the neighbors, they shared about how much they hate our school.
Okay, well, I mean, that's not, we're not here to talk about that today, so.
I, I think uh I've been doing my best to just keep that out of it, to be honest, on both sides. It seems like there is a little bit of history. I
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, there's, yeah, we're not here to talk about the um relationship between the property owner and the school, so. Thank you, Mr. Curial. I don't think anybody else uh from the commission has any questions.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Okay, uh, since I'm not hearing anything, we will close the uh public forum. I just want to ask staff, uh, can you, you have verified that public, all public notification is in accordance with county standards?
That's correct.
Okay, and then is there a length on this SUP or is it just open-ended?
Uh, permanent.
Permanent, okay. And I think that's the only questions I had. Um, I, I think this is a very difficult uh one. Um, but we are here to talk about zoning and whether or not the county is acceptable of an alteration of the setbacks and the diameter of the array. Um, if there weren't for that, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, it's a thirty-year.
It's a thirty-year SUP?
Period.
Correct. Um, so yeah, I mean, I guess that's what we're here to talk about, um, diameter of the array and the setback on this lot. Is there any questions or comments from the commission? Anybody else like to discuss this?
Mister Chairman, Commissioner Schlosser.
Yes, Commissioner Schlosser.
First, I'd like to say thank you for giving the lady that lost her husband the time to speak her piece. I appreciate that. Um, regardless of the use FCC guidelines. Uh, second of all, the lady that spoke that lost her husband, I just want you to know and I'm sure that everybody on the commission uh feels the same exact way that we have total respect for you and that that took a ton of guts for you to do that. Um, truly unbelievable. With that being said, uh, over the years, I've voted in favor of at least a dozen cell towers. And I've not heard once, I'm sure the county's right, with these FCC guidelines regarding uh, health concerns or whatever. So I voted probably in favor of all of them with one exception because it was really ugly and I just voted against it and, and was the lone vote against it. With that, and this is not a health comment, it's just a common sense concern that I have and statement. And again, it's not a health comment, but just like I wouldn't live underneath high tension power lines, wouldn't live, I wouldn't live next to a battery plant or a substation. I sure wouldn't want my kids, and I know these are spread out all over the place. I wouldn't want to let my kids uh live next to a school with this, with this uh tower here. And with that, um, I guess my main opposition is, I'm opposed to the diameter and the pole setbacks that, that uh they're proposing for this, for this SUP. And uh, with that, I'm gonna vote against this application. So I am.
All right, great. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Schlosser. Uh, is there anybody else uh from the commission that um would like to speak?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Swart?
Thank you. I just want to start off with that I am in absolute agreement with Commissioner Schlosser. And although I understand that there's certain things that you don't want us to speak about, I have quite a bit of background on these cell towers and I am in total agreeance with him. I wouldn't want anybody that I know that I care about, including, including an entire community to be next to this, and so I'm gonna be a strong no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Swart. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
This is Commissioner Montoya.
Yes, Commissioner Montoya?
As a publicly elected school board member, it pains me to hear the concerns of the school administrators, uh, the parents and the community members. So um, with that, I cannot support this uh petition.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you, Commissioner Montoya. Is there any other commissioners that would like to speak? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, wait, hold on one second. Commissioner Schlosser? Yeah? All right, so I do have to make one more comment. Like I said, this is a tough case. My biggest hang-up with this is obviously the safety of the school. I have young kids that are in school, and I'm not real comfortable with the setbacks being allowed to be cut short. The fall of a one-to-one is there for a reason, and if, God forbid, something were to happen, I would hate to have this pole fall over onto an occupied campus. So that's my, my two cents on why I would oppose it. I think that, that this needs to fall into the right setbacks. So, sorry, Commissioner Schlosser, you can go ahead with your motion. I just wanted to point out my two cents on that.
All right, thank you. I vote to deny case Z2024056.
All right, we have a recommendation to not approve case 2024056 by Commissioner Schlosser. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I got a second by Commissioner Swart. Is there any comments on the motion? All right, hearing none, Rosalie, we will go for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Agreed, yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
No.
Commissioner Montoya, I think Luke, or Commissioner Schlosser recommended denial of this, so a no vote would...
Yes, I, I approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes, and I just want to also emphasize beyond what our chairman said, I also agree adamantly with Commissioner Montoya, and I already stated that I agreed with Luke. I think it's just so significant. My vote is yes.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending denial by a vote of five to zero with Commissioner Landall recused.
Wonderful, thank you, Rosalie. Darren, do we have any other matters?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, please note that the August twenty-second zipper meeting has been canceled, so you have a break till September.
All right. Thank you, Darren, and with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at ten forty-five AM.